Mr. President, I move that the board approved the December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four agenda.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby. By the way, Ms. Bobby, our board member is on. Doing with us tonight. Board members, please remember to turn your microphones on and off when you speak. And Ms. Bobby, is Ms. Bobby on? She's not on. All right. Well, we'll continue until she does. Turn. Motion. Okay. Next, we have report of board members. Dr. Douglas.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, my report begins with that I attended our board retreat back last month, which I thought was wonderful. I enjoyed the, uh, those special district presentations that came from our legal department and from Dr. Greiner. You were stellar. You were stellar, so I appreciate that. I had the opportunity to adopt a first grader from Spring Valley Elementary School in behalf of Raytown South's Christmas event, and that has been wonderful for me and my family to shout for a little one because my youngest grandchild is thirteen. So, all right. So, and I attended the, uh, Raytown Educational Foundation Trustees November Board Meeting. Enjoyed that. And I also got to participate in team giving with the Raytown Rotary for those in need for the holiday at Three Trails Elementary. That's what I've been busy doing.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. Next, we have Ms. Johnson Barry.
So for me, I also got to attend that same board members retreat. Um, it was really exciting just to see all of the things that are going well for the district in the future. Um, and a little bit of like legal presentation, Dr. Greiner and the entire team are doing an amazing job as well. And, um, also another highlight was seeing Little Shop of Horrors. I have been wanting to see it for years and years and years, so I got my opportunity. So I just want to give a special shout out to the entire Theater Arts Department. I mean, you could put everybody on Broadway. That's how amazing they were. I could have seen it every single night. It was that incredible. Um, and also I am, I'm adopting a fifth grader from Southside, um, or fifth grader from one of the middle schools or elementary schools. And so I look forward to doing that. I was able to do it last year. And then just last thing, I'm looking forward this weekend to being one of the debate judges. I do that every single year and our students, um, just all the students, they always have really great arguments. It's always so hard to decide. And so I just go through pages and pages of notes, but I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson Barry. And we'll move on to our next agenda item. Which is a report of our superintendent, and she will be speaking to us from remote location.
I am remote. I'm right upstairs. So good evening. Good evening Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Newton, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and members of the Raytown Quality School District Community. Uh, this evening, much of what I wanted to share has already been communicated. Um, so I'll begin with the last portion of what Ms. Johnson Barry just spoke of. I just want to compliment, especially since many of them are in the audience this evening, um, the production of Little Shop of Horrors, which was absolutely amazing. Um, not that my word counts, but it's only from the perspective of an artist or a musician. Uh, there wasn't a beat that was missed, a note that was missed, a line that was skipped, and the theatrics and the lighting was absolutely amazing. So I just want to compliment our students for doing an amazing job. As I continue to travel around our district, I also want to give a compliment, uh, to Spring Valley Elementary. I attended Spring Valley's, uh, winter performance the other evening, and I'm still smiling as you could see the excitement in the faces of our students as they were performing. Uh, and it was absolutely amazing. So bravo to you all. I also attended some athletic events. Um, I just want to compliment our Ray South Middle School basketball team. I also want to congratulate and say job well done to our swim team, our girls swim team. Um, just absolutely amazing. If you've not had the opportunity to see our students in action, I encourage you to do so. Um, it's worth the observation, but more so it's worth the support for our children. So kudos to our coaches and our teachers for providing those spaces for our children. And my last point is I spent Friday at Raytown High School fulfilling my obligation, uh, as the substitute teacher for the day. And so thank you, Mr. Burris, for all that you do while I'm not you. The kids truly missed you. Um, but I think I did a pretty okay job as a substitute teacher. And it was just nice to be able to spend time with kids amongst, um, our teachers and staff, um, but really keeping my feet wet as a teacher. Um, this concludes my portion of the superintendent's report. So now I'm going to move to item eight point five, um, and that would be Dr. Greiner. Dr. Greiner.
Thank you, Dr. Martin Knox, President Burton, Vice President Newton, members of the board. Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Excited to take a few minutes tonight and share some updates regarding the district's annual performance report. As you might know, our APR was published publicly, uh, a few weeks ago, right after the Thanksgiving holiday. And so tonight I'll be sharing a few highlights, and I'm certainly open to try to answer any questions the board might have afterwards. So just a little bit of background about the APR. This is the process that the state of Missouri uses to assign accreditation levels for every public school district in the state. There are two hundred points that are available to each district to earn. Seventy percent or a hundred and forty points relate to the district's performance on high stakes tests, either the MAP test, which is taken by a third through eighth graders, or end of course tests taken by our high school students. In addition, there are continuous improvement scores that are points that are earned by districts regarding a myriad of categories, and we'll go through those quickly tonight. Just a little bit of information about how APR is scored. Of course, all districts aim for full accreditation. In order to have full accreditation, the school district must earn at least seventy percent of the points possible, or a hundred and forty points out of two hundred. Down at the bottom of the page, you can see for the fall of twenty-four, the information that was shared with districts and ultimately the public a few weeks ago. That's that middle, uh, row, twenty-three, the, the data that I'm sharing tonight is from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, but was made available, uh, just a few weeks ago. This year, there was an initial classification of accreditation levels under the new M six classification. So what I'm sharing with you tonight is an initial classification. However, no school district in the state that is fully accredited will have their accreditation level changed this year. But they will look at two consecutive years of APR performance before making a reclassification. So what is on this slide represents three years of performance, and then at the bottom is a composite performance report. So at the top for twenty-three, twenty-four, the district earned seventy-one point five percent of points possible. As you can see, from twenty-two to twenty-three to twenty-four, we've seen a steady incline in performance. That is truly a credit to our teachers and our staff for their hard work to support students and make them more academically sound. We're also very proud to have a strong group of building leaders, our principals and their teams doing great work. And of course, at the district level, we have a fantastic team um, of professionals that work really hard. But, uh, the improvement we've seen over time, particularly the increase between twenty-three to twenty-four, is a credit to the hard work of our staff and our kids and our supportive families. That three-year composite at the bottom put us at sixty-nine point seven percent for the three years combined. Just to slide back one slide, we need seventy percent to be fully accredited. However, our accreditation level will not be changing this year due to falling below that seventy percent threshold. Our plan, not our hope, our plan is that next year, when we'll be able to share this year's data, and that twenty-two year will fall off, our new three-year average will be well above seventy percent. So a little bit of information regarding the APR scoring. The top level of performance is target, the bottom is floor. And again, I know this slide is busy, but will tell you that the areas that I've highlighted in yellow represent areas of improvement for the district and are part of the reason why we saw an increase in performance from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. So specifically in the areas of growth for English Language Arts, Math and Social Studies, our district saw an increase in points earned. Again, that work is directly attributed to the efforts of our staff and our leaders and our students. They've done the work necessary to show improvement, and we are confident that that improvement will continue throughout this year. On the right-hand side of the slide, you'll see continuous improvement totals. Those are areas that, um, the district assigns additional points. And one area that I'll point out is in attendance, where we did not earn any points last year. The state awards points for attendance if a district has at least seventy percent of their students attending ninety percent of the time. And so I will tell you that that is an area of improvement for us. There is a lot of work happening throughout the buildings with our families to communicate those expectations and provide supports. It's no secret that kids cannot be successful or as successful if they're not at school regularly. So I will tell you that part of our strategic plan this year are several different ways in which we are attempting to support students and families to ensure that our students are here more often. So it's important to understand this information in context of districts around us that share similar demographics. The districts listed here on this slide are districts that we have benchmarked ourselves against due to, uh, again, similar demographic size and proximity. So Raytown finds, finds itself ranked third out of six neighboring districts. You can see there that, uh, Independence, KC Mo at the top, and Raytown, uh, third, Grandview, fourth, and Center and Hickman Mills are tied for fifth in terms of points earned.
Really, that's an improvement, I believe, isn't it? We were fifth, I think, the last time we looked at this.
Think we were fourth.
Fourth.
Yeah.
So we moved up one. Do you have one for just the single year and not the composite, what a rank would be?
I can get that. I don't have it from this presentation, but I'm happy to send that to the board. And really, this is the most important slide that I'll share with you tonight, and that is understanding the work that we are engaged in on a daily basis to help students become more academically sound. All of our schools have progress plans that they develop collaboratively with their guiding coalition and their staff. Each of those plans have five distinct goals. I'll highlight the achievement goal because that is the way we are improving learning for students, standard by standard and unit by unit. The work that happens to improve achievement for every instructional unit is critical to, to occur during our Wednesday early release collaboration. It occurs during common planning during the week. Continue to be blown away as we visit buildings every day and spend time in classrooms of the hard work of our staff to collaborate around not only delivering first best instruction, but also delivering timely and systematic interventions for on-grade level standards, which is tier two, and interventions for our students that are below grade level, which is tier three. So I'm very proud of this work led by Dr. Moore with our elementary schools and Ms. Bassett at our secondary schools. They work extremely hard to meet with schools every day of the week and reflect with building leaders, spend time in classrooms, provide feedback. So Tony and Jessica, thank you. There's also a lot of good work happening around social emotional learning, around how, how to reduce behaviors that prohibit students from being successful. And I'll also shout out the work that we're doing this year around student and family belonging. So we have intentional goals in every school around these five areas. And again, this is truly a collaborative effort and work that I'm honored to be a part of in this district. A resource that I'll share with you, um, I won't go through all sixty pages tonight, but there is a playbook that's linked on this slide. Uh, and this really captures the heart of our work in Raytown around how we collaborate and work together. We are a professional learning community. That's not something we do on Wednesdays. It's something we are every day. And so if you were curious to know more a bit about the work happening in our buildings day to day, I would encourage you to check out the PLC playbook. We also use data that we're gathering locally. So we get information back every year from the state. We turn those into heat maps that help us be very strategic around the standards we know our students are going to see on these high stakes tests, the, the complexity of the questions that are asked, so that we bake those types of questions and standards into the assessments that our kids see unit by unit. And so that pair assessment bullet point, when we assess students locally, we work to mirror the expectations that we see in the end of the year tests, so that our kids have lots of practice and lots of supports. Tier one instruction, again, what all kids get. We've made an important investment this year in partnering with Marzano Strategies to really help support our teachers with more instructional strategies that help students learn. And so if you know anything about Marzano and the research behind his work, uh, the strategies that we are helping our, our staff learn about are research-based and proven to work. I'll also call out our tier two interventions for high school students in the room. You guys might recognize the bird hour that occurs at middle schools and high schools. We have tier two interventions happening every day in all of our buildings. Our elementary school, school students, the very first thing that happens every day is the entire school embraces those kids that need extra time and support, and every adult in the school is helping deliver interventions. It is an inspiration to watch. If you ever have a chance to visit an elementary school, first, first thing, kids get off the bus, they get their breakfast, and we start with interventions that every adult in that building is involved in. From custodian to, to a secretary, to an instructional aide, to a teacher, it is truly all hands on deck. I'll also mention the work we're doing intentionally around tier three interventions, because we know we have kids that are years behind. How do we get them to become more academically sound? We have to give them access to tier one and tier two and tier three. It's not an either or. They get it all. And there's some very intentional work happening this year, uh, to improve the experience of our students that have those, those gaps. And again, it is, it is fantastic work and it is research-based. Final thing I'll add is the work we're doing to really embrace the entire child. As you can imagine, if a student struggles academically, they might also struggle coming to school every day, or they may be dealing with trauma in their life. They may have some difficulties at home. Uh, and so our site intervention teams are a new process that we've engaged in this year to do the work around wrapping our arms around our students and meeting all of their needs, whether it's academic, attendance, social, emotional, whatever the needs they have, the site intervention teams are stepping in and developing plans to meet the needs of those kids. That's all I have tonight. Be happy to entertain any questions from the board.
Mr. President, I have more of a comment. I wanted to really compliment you guys on the work you're doing. I've been in a couple of meetings you guys are having. I wanted to say I'm really like blown away with the consistency and commitment that you guys have made to get us to this point. So I wanted to say from the top down, starting with the superintendent to you, to Dr. Moore, to Ms. Bassett, Dr. Bassett, to the work that you guys are doing, I'm really impressed with the staff and the students that have bought into it. So I really want to commend you guys on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also appreciate the, uh, the way you deliver the information to us. You keep us abreast of what's going on and even, uh, letting us know, uh, with confidence, uh, where we're headed. Because we want to make sure that we continue to improve and that be able to educate every student in our district. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Dr. Greiner, um, I just want to follow up with just saying you guys are doing a fantastic job. And I just had a quick question. When we talked about wanting to get some of those points for our attendance category, um, I know we talked about it, but can you briefly just talk about some of those interventions?
Yeah, so really it begins with accurate attendance reporting. And so some of the things that we've been working on, uh, have just been to develop systems of ensuring that we are taking attendance and that the attendance we take is an accurate reflection of the students that are in the building. So there's several things that we are doing led by Shirley Early, our Director of Administrative Services, and Sarah Oliver, uh, who works with attendance throughout the district. They're doing some good work to really meet buildings where they are and help them improve some of the processes that they have in place to make sure that we have accurate attendance being taken. And then from there, it is unsung heroes like our advisory teachers at our high schools that call home to families who've missed consecutive days. There are some procedures that are in our policy that require people to step in the gap and make it known to our families and our kids that we miss them when they're not here. And that connection is critical. If there's any research that proves what improves attendance the most, it's when students believe that there are adults in the building that they have a relationship with, that they can trust. And when we, when we reach out to those families and let them know that they're missed, it's amazing, uh, what some of the returns can be for us. So part of it is just doing a better job of making sure we're checking in with our kids and inviting them back as soon as they're able to return to school. Um, we also, as I mentioned, the site intervention teams developing plans for our kids that have it, have challenges to be at school every day. We are supporting them, whether it's through their social emotional health, their academic supports. It might be something, um, physically that they're facing that we need to develop a plan around. So really, it's, it's really shoring up the processes to make sure that no student is falling through the cracks. I would say those are a couple of things that we are implementing through our strategic plan projects that really stand out to me.
Thank you, Dr. Greiner.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, Dr. Greiner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Greiner. Um, and number eight point six, it's our amazing student representatives that will be providing the board and our community with a report. So our student representatives.
Uh, good evening, President Burton, Vice President Newton, and members of the board. I'm Madison Dansby from Raytown South. And recently, this is, okay, this is the start of our report. So recently, we have had our first few basketball games, and they've actually been very good. Um, they're like a very good opportunity to bring together our students and our families to support like all the athletes, like basketball cheer and, um, dance as well. And then we're also, um, so during finals week, we're also trying to get involved with our school and our district with helping improve our attendance records by holding an incentive hot cocoa and movie screening during the long advisory hour on next Monday. It'll be an award for, of a word for all students with attendance over ninety for this half of the year. And we are planning on doing more incentives like this during next semester to improve attendance going forward as well. And then thinking ahead of our Christmas party, which my other representative will talk to you about in a moment, um, we are starting to plan our next semester events, like our annual block history program, um, our first court warming since the pandemic, and discussing our assembly activities for our revel game.
Very good.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anaya Gilmore. I'm going to be talking to you guys about our party. So December is one of our less busy months for student council, but one of our big things is our Christmas party for the children. So student council and some interact clubs are going to be helping set up for the party at five o'clock. It will include games, food, and a real life Santa. This year, the person playing Santa is Mr. Lamb. Um, the party will end around eight thirty. I will also like to thank everyone who is helping adopt children and like bring gifts. We also appreciate everyone that's doing it. We've had a lot of help from our students, like students' parents and also teachers around. So I will also like just give a big thanks to you guys.
When is that party?
Our party will be December eighteenth, next Wednesday. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Hello, board, Vice President Newton, President Burton, and Superintendent Martin Knox upstairs. Um, I'm Chase Dunear, Student Council President at Raytown High, and we've been having a very busy month. Uh, so the first thing is we have our annual event, uh, Cookies and Cramming coming up for finals week. A staff member from each subject and students will be available to tutor other students after school in the library for a few separate days. Um, there will be hot cocoa, cookies, and other snacks provided. Um, and this is a time for students to have some individualized study time with teachers and other students before finals. Um, next, on Wednesday, we will be having our, uh, Student Council Winter Celebration. It'll be a potluck. Uh, students will bring in snacks, drinks, food, and we'll play games and celebrate our hard work from first semester. Uh, we are also going to have a giving tree at the, uh, potluck, where StuCo members will bring hats, gloves, and other winter clothing items that can be donated back here into the community. Um, next is school decor. So we've been working really hard recently to make sure the school is decorated, bright, vibrant. Uh, we have purchased some balloon towers that we now have up at the entrances that, uh, change as the seasons go along, so we decorate them as the seasons change. And we've also changed a lot of our bulletin boards and revamped a bunch of our display cases. Uh, next, the week before Christmas break, uh, we have a spirit week for students and staff. Uh, Monday will be holiday headgear. Tuesday will be family photos, which is where you match with someone else. Wednesday will be Candy Cane Day, dress in red and white. Thursday, Crocs with holiday socks, and Friday, holiday pajamas. And then next, we have Toilet Talks, which I mentioned we were about to start next month, so that has started. It has been amazing. Um, every week we put flyers in the bathroom stalls that tell students about things going on in our school building for that week, uh, to promote engagement and interaction within our school activities. Um, and then Adopt a Family. This year, Raytown StuCo has adopted a single mom with eight kids here in the Raytown community. Each grade has a competition who can raise the most money. Um, whichever grade rates, raises the most money will get a pizza party, uh, funded by StuCo. And if anyone else is interested in donating, uh, you can email felicia.taylor@raytownschools.org or me, two two eight zero five nine at student@raytownschools.org and can connect y'all. Um, lastly, we are already planning ahead for prom, port warming, and the Raytown versus Raytown South game and assembly, which some really exciting things are in the works for that, which you guys will hear about next month. And we are also trying to start planning a teacher versus teacher, Raytown versus Raytown South volleyball game in the spring. So that'll be fun, and I'll be planning that with, uh, Madison. Um, and then, yeah, this past month has been very busy, but our student council has worked very hard, and we are so proud of all the achievements of everyone. So thank you. See you guys next month.
And.
Is that all?
And that includes.
Hold on before you guys speak. So, um, great reports as always. I just want to remind us of one thing that when we started these two representatives, one thing we wanted to do is have you guys maybe from time to time have input on some of the things the board discusses and some of our actions, whether they're helpful to you or if you have ideas. And we just heard about a thing about where we need to work on student attendance. So I'm just going to encourage you guys, if you guys ever have an idea of ways to encourage student attendance, let us know, let the administrators know. That's something you could be really involved in and help us all through the district in a way like that.
Mr. President, one thing I'm gonna say to you guys, I'll be up in you guys' school a lot of the time. And I'm, and I'm gonna start being there even more. Uh, I know you said some about giving donations to you guys. Um, and, um, anyway, I know Dr. Douglas and me, we do that quite a bit. But another thing is. But another thing is I, I will be up there to talk to you guys and, and Mr. Moore said something. I want to get you guys feedback. I want to know what we can do, especially with the attendance and especially with doing anything that helps support you guys. So anything that we can do and, and you guys do have, our emails are on the website. But if you guys ever want to come up and talk to us, then you guys can. We, we are totally, everybody on this board, we are very open to talking to any of you guys. We are totally like open. So I really appreciate everything you guys do to support you guys' school in any way I can do or anything that I'm sure any of us can do this medicine. So I want to commend you guys. Thank you very much.
Good job. Thanks a lot.
And that concludes the portion of the superintendent's report. I also want to add a point in there, Mr. Moore. Um, you brought up a very good point, uh, just for the knowledge of some who may not know. I also have lunch with the students. I think the best part for them is having lunch. Uh, but the best part for me is listening to them and hearing their, uh, feedback about ways in which we can continue to improve. I tell them all the time, they're our customers and if our customers aren't satisfied, then we are not doing our job. And so we do provide that forum for our students to provide feedback. I also have student forums, um, where I have been going with communications to every school, uh, to talk to different student groups about what's positive in their building and what areas can we improve upon. So we're always incorporating the voice of children because it's essential in the success of our students, but also for the success of our community. Um, so I think you've brought up some very good points and thank you. And, uh, that concludes my portion of the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Bye.
Next we have our presentations and recognitions.
Good evening, President Burton, Vice President Newton, Board of Education, Dr. Martin Knox. As part of this year's RQS Day, we encourage students to enter a creative contest called Why I Love My School. And students could enter in three categories, essay, multimedia and video. Um, and winners were presented with a $100 gift card from the Raytown Educational Foundation. So thank you to Ref for that, for partnering with us on this. There are six winners total, two in each category, one from elementary and one from secondary. And we have a video with a look at our winners.
I didn't know I was gonna win. So my dad said like, no way, you're joking. My mom was like, you won? And I was like, yeah. And then I went in my room and I went in my pillow and I was like, I won.
I was really excited. I was really happy to find out that I won.
I was really excited. I know it's kind of nice because all my, my friends in my class, they cheered for me.
My mom's the one who told me about the opportunity and things. And since I've been in this school district for a really long time, I just thought it'd be kind of easy to just write about the schools that I like because I didn't have to really force anything out.
My electronic journalism T-shirt originally told me about it and she was like, if you win it, then you have like an automatic A in your class for the rest of the semester. So I just decided to do it. I already had an A in your class, but I thought it'd be fun.
I was just really excited to write about my school because I love my school so much.
I was like really interested because I wanted to show off my skills of writing.
Creating stuff, it makes me feel calm and happy.
We like do stuff with computers, robots and other stuff. It's mostly like technology and just learning about that and trying to challenge our brain and a lot of stuff.
I love it. I love it so much.
I really love to be like a little sassy in some videos and like be funny and make people like inspired about me.
I write like personal things and I show my dad and he seems really proud of me. And it really inspires me to like write more and grow.
The person who inspires me a lot is my friends and my teacher and usually my parents too.
I just wanted to like convey like the community of Raytown. I just really like all the people here and I like it when we all come together.
School doesn't have to be just learning. It can also be fun and just make the memories that you want to keep.
So those were just some snippets of what they did, but you can view all of our winner entries on our website and that link is on our homepage. Um, and not all of our winners were able to join us, um, this evening, but most of them are here with us. I'm going to ask Martha Cockrell, um, Executive Director with the Raytown Educational Foundation to join me as we call up our winners. Elsa Downs, Raytown Central Middle School.
Hey, we gonna get to take a picture?
Yeah, we're gonna stay to take the picture.
Okay.
We're gonna miss that.
Jade Slaughter, Blue Ridge Elementary. Beto Lahand, Fleet Ridge Elementary. And Lee Hand, I practiced, still got it wrong. Uh, Samantha Blanton, Blue Ridge Elementary. And, um, these two cannot be here with us, Harper McKinley and Anise Graves. So congratulations. Parents, please join us up front.
Wonderful, wonderful. Look back at little, the little ones. Very good. Excellent. Good job.
Each month I wonder how we're gonna do it next month and it gets better and better.
Yeah. Lots of little people, isn't it?
Yeah. I had an A anyway.
No bribing.
Uh, next on the agenda is the public comment, uh, period, uh, on the agenda items. Uh, no one has signed up to make public comments, so we'll move to the next item. And that would be board committee reports. Do we have any, any committee reports this month? All right.
Mr. President, this finance committee meeting, uh, met this evening. So we're going to hear a report from our auditor in just a few minutes. Everything else is.
Yeah.
In line.
Okay. So moving forward. Agenda will have, uh, uh, Raytown Education Foundation report.
Um, our Raytown Educational Foundation, uh, Board of Trustees meeting highlights for November twentieth, twenty twenty four. Uh, we had our annual audit. Emmerich and Company PC conducted its annual audit for the Raytown Educational Foundation for fiscal years twenty twenty three through twenty twenty four. Amy Gordon from Emmerich and Company reviewed the draft of the audit with the members of the Board of Trustees at the November meeting. The Board of Trustees voted unanimously to accept the draft of the audit as presented. Fundraising. Rockin' in Raytown. Raytown Educational Foundation held its new event, Rockin' in Raytown, a family dance night on November fifteenth at the Central Middle School. One hundred and thirteen students and family members, along with forty Raytown VIPs and celebrities attended. The event featured DJs, a DJ, dancing, temporary tattoos, a photo spot and a, and appearances by the VIPs and celebrities. Participant survey results were overwhelmingly positive and everyone is looking forward to Rockin' in Raytown twenty twenty five. A special shout out to the following Raytown VIPs and celebrities. Dr. Martin Knox, I understand, had a wonderful dance presentation. Uh, Mayor Mike McDonald, Raytown Jay Walkers and Raytown South High Cardets. Raytown Quality School Elementary Principals, Melissa Glasgow at Fleetwood. Uh, Claire Quinn at Southwood and Anika Williams at Eastwood Hills. Teaching and learning grants, Games Galore. I hope I got the, did I get the schools, schools right?
Sounds good.
Say it. I know I gotta get you right. I saw you hit it, Bob.
Fleet Ridge.
Fleet Ridge. Sorry, Fleet Ridge. Teaching and learning grants, uh, Games Galore. West Ridge's Miranda Kistner and Courtney Wattenbarger reported on their grant, Games Galore, in the amount of six thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars with a slideshow presentation. The purpose of the grant is to purchase games and equipment to use for all school events such as ELA Math Family Nights, Field Day, Student Recognition Platinum Parties and Indoor and Outdoor Recession. Miranda and Courtney created activity tubs for every classroom teacher. They are currently gathering, gathering data for their grant goals, which are increased participation in family night, increased engagement and friendship made during recess and school events, decreased behavior issues during recess. Raytown Quality School Day, Why I Love My Student Contest Sponsorships. Gifts cards. Raytown Educational Foundation provided $100 Walmart gift card for the six students who won the Why I Love My School contest in the categories of essay, videos and multimedia. President Kim Snyder presented the cards to the winner. The students were presented tonight, uh, during our Ray of Hope video. United in Songs, the music of Raytown at Kaufman Center for the Performing Arts sponsorship. Diamond Level Sponsorship. Through the donations of the Raytown Educational Board members, the foundation will become a diamond level sponsor, two thousand five hundred to two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for the United in Song. The Music of Raytown at the Kaufman Center for Performing Arts will be presented on April sixteenth, twenty twenty five. The event will feature performances from the Raytown High and Raytown South High School Bands, Orchestra and Choir Students. Last but not least, Share the Love. Save the date for the Raytown Educational Annual Community Breakfast, which will be held February sixth, twenty twenty five. And that ends my report.
Right.
You read that, so.
And forgive me for, all I had was initials and I was like, I think I know these.
Fleetwood Mac can't go wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's great. You make the, make me want to go to all that. The way you, the way you announced that, I appreciate that. Very inspiring. Appreciate everybody, all the work that's being done to, uh, make learning fun. It's not just about learning, it's fun. And so, uh, next we have an unfinished business, uh, board policy adoptions, uh, just for information there. Information. Need to make most.
I moved at the board approved policies, GCBDA professional staff short term, LEAD GDBDA, support staff LEAD, ILA test integrity and security, JG student discipline.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mine ain't coming up. Not coming up. Here it goes.
Motion passes. Next we have a, the audit report.
Mr. President. I'm going to board accept the, uh, the basic financial statements here into June thirtieth, twenty twenty four as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All right.
Are you free for us to put your mic down on our camera?
Good evening, President Burton, Vice President Newton, members of the board and Dr. Martin Knox. I'm Jackie Vernon, the Executive Director of Business Operations. Every year, the district is required to have an independent audit, which, uh, was recently completed for the FY twenty four school year. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Sandra Barrera with KPM CPAs and advisors to discuss our most recent audit. Hi, Sandra.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, board and Dr. Martin Knox and Jackie. It's nice to see everyone again. Um, I am going to just briefly, uh, share my screen with you um, and go up over the audit report and I will try to make it brief. So let me get this going real quick. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Jackie, yeah, okay, wonderful. Okay, well, um, my name is Sandra Barrera and I have met, um, a couple of you through my, my time being in Raytown during this past summer and over the last couple of years. Um, first I would like to just step back and take a moment to say thank you, um, to both the board, uh, the, the finance department, um, and everyone who works there in the building. Uh, their kindness that has been extended to us during and after field work, um, is wonderful. Um, I, I believe everybody has received a copy of the audit report either electronically or, um, in the, in the hard copy form. So I'm going to briefly go over the results of the audit and just do some highlights real quick. If anybody has any questions during, uh, my presentation, just feel free to interrupt me at any time. Um, and I will also address questions at the end of my presentation, um, if you would prefer to wait until then. So the first thing we're going to do is just start on page three, i- if you are following along with me. Um, but before we get into this auditor's report right here, I, I just want to explain a little bit that the audit of the district is actually comprised of three different audits and an examination. And what this means is that there are a lot of these letters and opinions in this audit packet. So, uh, just right up front, um, our opinion is really the very, very first thing that you get to in this letter. And this is probably what, what everybody wants to hear, right? Um, so our opinion is that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. This is what we call a clean opinion or the best opinion that you can get. Um, I'm not going to read this, but I do want to point out what is included in this letter in case anybody does want to look at it. Um, we actually perform our audit in accordance with audit standards generally accepted in the United States of America. And then in addition to that, we also have to, to perform our audit, um, under these governmental auditing standards. And what this is, is just an additional. Under these governmental auditing standards, and what this is, is just an additional layer of um audit standards that we have to follow. Also in this letter are the responsibilities of management, it is management's responsibilities. Uh for these financial statements, it is their responsibility to ensure that they are fairly fairly stated. And then further in the letter, um it talks about our responsibilities as the auditor. Then if you are following along, if you want to turn to page ten, we'll just briefly go over uh the financial part of this. So total assets of the district is a little bit over uh eighty-seven million. Okay, that is cash and investments. And then of that eighty-seven point four million, we have several items that are restricted. Okay, so we have about nine point four million that is restricted solely for debt service, this is in the debt service fund, this is that debt service levy. Um that is to be used for bond payments only. We also have about one point six million that is restricted for student activities. We also have an additional twenty-five point four million that is restricted um. For use on the bond projects. So there have been a couple of bonds issued in the last couple of years, and this is still. As of June thirtieth, the remaining amount of unspent bond proceeds. Then we have about six hundred and seventy-five thousand that is uh in reserve for that. For the health insurance terminal liability. Then we have this three point seven million, it's not restricted, however, it is the residual amount. In this capital projects fund that is not bond money. Uh of three point seven, and that leaves. Free about forty-six point six million. So another thing that is a common term is the fund balance percentage. The fund balance percentage is thirty-nine point seven percent this year. Um it's a little bit higher than what we've seen in the last couple of years. This is equivalent to four point seven months. So, if anybody's wondering what the fund balance percentage means, what this is, is it's the unrestricted unending fund balance. Only the general and special revenue funds, cuz these are considered operating funds. And then you you take the total disbursements of these two funds. Take the fund by balance divided by the disbursements of the two funds, and that's what you get with fund balance. Uh we recommend at least three months worth of operating. Uh fund balance and you have about four and a half months, so the district is doing well with operating fund balance. And then we can also expect to see fund balance start falling. In general for school districts, just because the S R and R P A funds are starting to dry up, they're being finalized and they're going away. Soon, which I'm sure uh most individuals in the finance area will be happy about this. So continuing on, uh this is just on the next page, page eleven. So. Uh this is what you will see in your audit report, but you will not see these comment. Uh these columns over here on the right side, I've added these solely for uh visual. So as you can see, total receipts actually went up about nineteen and a half million, which is a fourteen percent increase from the prior year. The majority of this change is in your local revenue, it increased fourteen million or twenty-one percent. And majority of this increase is in property taxes, eleven point six million was in property taxes. And then another three million was interest on earnings, so you know, we will. We actually already are seeing interest rates drop, so. Um and then, of course, you also have the Jackson County Property Tax thing going here, so I expect this to. Not increase quite so much next year. And then in your disbursements, you'll also see your disbursements increased about sixteen million. This increase actually is due to the construction, twenty-two point eight million in construction projects. And fourteen million or fi- five billion dot dollar increase in debt service. The district has a net loss this year of pu- five point five million. But again, remember approximately twenty-one million in disbursements. Uh were. From those unspent bond proceeds. Okay, so. And and again, remember you have about twenty-five million sitting in unspent bond proceeds, so we expect this to be. Uh close to, if not. Higher next year, which would create more of a loss. This area down here, I have a couple of things highlighted, but these are the other financing sources, these are. Items that are not routine, like your receipts and disbursements that are up above. So last year, you'll see you you issued a thirty-five million dollar bond issue, you had premiums of about three point five million. So this year, you didn't have a new bond issue. You did refund some bonds for eighteen million, nineteen million refunded bonds, you issued new bonds of eighteen million. And had some premiums, so that kind of has a zero zero net effect right here. And again, you can see that that five point five million dollar loss brings you down to the eighty-seven million that we saw back. On the previous page um of of cash and investments. Does anybody have any questions so far? Okay, I am not going to read the notes um that are, you know, in the next section. So we can go to page eighty-seven. And remember, I said we have a lot of these letters and a lot of opinions in here, so this is our second letter, second auditor's letter. This is that letter um for the audit that is in accordance with the government auditing standards. What this is, is. It's still about the financial statement audit, but it's that second layer. Of audit standards that we have to follow. So, we we report on the internal controls over financial reporting. If you come down here, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls that we consider to be material weaknesses. Doesn't mean that. They don't exist, but we did not identify any internal control issues. The second part of that letter is the report on compliance and other matters, so. So in addition to internal controls, did you comply with state regulations? Again, our tests disclose no instances of noncompliance or other matters. That are required to be reported under these governmental auditing standards. Uh here's our third letter, okay, so this is um. Our report on compliance over major programs. Um in accordance with Uniform Guidance, so what this is, is the federal part of the audit. So when entities spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal awards. Um you are required to to have what we call a single audit. So this is our report on that. In our opinion, the district complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements of the programs that we tested. Now I'll go over real quick in a second which programs we did test. So again, a clean opinion on your federal audit as well. So real quick, this uh this is a schedule of findings and questions costs. Doesn't mean that we had findings or question costs, it's literally just a summary, so in your financial statements, again, an unmodified opinion, that's a clean opinion. No material weaknesses were identified, no significant deficiencies. Then we come down here to the federal awards or the single audit portion. Again, no findings, um here is where we tell you which grants we uh tested this year. So we tested Title One and we tested the Special Education Cluster of Awards. The district actually spent about eleven point seven million in federal awards. And we tested approximately four point seven million uh between these two programs. Um the fourth auditor's report or accountant's report, so this has to do with the state section, so this is the. State Schedule of Selected Statistics, so we have to look at. The district's compliance with certain things such as attendance, membership, transportation, the budgets, we have to test your calendar. So. So after we tested all this stuff, we determined that the district did comply in all material respects. Uh with everything that Desi requires us to test, um so again, congratulations on no findings there as well. And then for the board, there were two additional letters that came with your packets. Um one of them was called the governance letter, and this just says uh that we didn't have any issues, we didn't have any issues with management. We didn't have any disagreements with management. We think that management. It is is doing a good job and we all got along, basically. The second letter is called a management letter, and it has recommendations for items that are not material to the financial statements. They aren't findings, but they are recommendations, um and I don't typically go over these in open session. Um but there are a couple of recommendations, and it's not because we had a finding on these. Um it's simply some new standards that are coming up that uh that do need some attention. Uh there is a big one, it's the G A S B one oh two, it's about compensated absences. This is a major change. Um in how they are accounted for, and I can get with Jackie and kind of give her some ideas, but. Basically, the G A S B is saying. Before, we used to report on just unused leave that will be paid out when someone leaves. Now we have to report all. Leave that may be taken, okay, or that will even be taken. Uh so that is a a fairly major change. Uh we're also gonna have a little bit of layout changes come. Uh the June twenty twenty-six audits um are changing just a little bit in format. Again, we do have a recommendation that the board and management continually. Look at your, review your internal controls, especially when it comes to cybersecurity. Um we've had a lot of school districts or some school districts. You know, have breaches as far as um vendors. Getting access to your routing numbers, um school districts paying the perpetrators direct. Uh when they thought it was going to the vendors um with these A C H payments, so just some recommendations to look at. And. Outside of that. Your finances are looking good this year, just, you know, I would definitely watch uh with us are going away. You know, watch that spending and those extra expenses that you've had over the years to make sure that that those fund balances aren't sliding. Too quickly, because we are seeing districts actually. Nearing the stressed level of that three percent fund balance. And that's all I have. Any questions?
No question. We have no questions, thank you for your report. It's good to hear that we are. In a good position.
Yes, yep, and doing a good job, so thank you. Alright, well, I am going to stop sharing my screen and everyone have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Sandra.
You're welcome.
Anything to add, Jackie?
I do not, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a vote. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Motion passes.
Mister President. I move to accept twenty twenty-five insurance premium with the Zerg. United Schools Insurance Council in the amount of two million eight hundred forty thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Second. Motion made and second it. Ms. Bobby? You're on mute, Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Mister President. I'm with the board, purchase of an acoustic grand piano for Raytown South High School, the amount of fifty-seven thousand four hundred twelve dollars after discounts and trade in.
Motion made and second it.
I would just point out that this is in the same regard, the same piano uh in the same price range that we bought for Raytown High School. Good, good instrument.
Motion made and second it. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mister President, I move that the board approve the December ninth, twenty twenty-four, the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded prior to uh voting, I'd like to read the donations for this month. We received a donation of twelve hundred dollars from Glensway Church to Raytown High School Choir. We received a donation of e-gift card worth three thousand one hundred ten dollars and seventy-three cents. From Office Depot to Southwood Elementary. We received a donation of socks, underwear, hats, and gloves worth a hundred dollars from Saint Matthews. To Robinson Elementary School. We received the donation of twenty-four pair of shoes worth. Three hundred and thirty-six dollars from Shoes from the Heart of Tree Three Trails Preschool. Donation of four center ice tickets worth four hundred dollars from the Kansas City Mavericks. To Southwood Elementary School. We received a donation of seven thousand dollars from North America Savings Bank. Community Development Committee to Raytown Cy- House High School Boys Basketball. Received a donation of ten ten dollar gift cards for attendance incentives from Quick Trip to Hernan Career Centers. Southwood Caps. We'd like to say thank you to everybody who donated this month, it's greatly appreciated. And will be put to great use, and I'm sure that our our students appreciate it, our families appreciate it, we certainly do as well. And thank you for the support of everybody in the community that donated. We can vote. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Yes.
Mister President. I move that the board adjourns. Meeting at.
Okay.
Seven fifty-four.
Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Alright, motion, meeting adjourned.
Everyone have happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas.
And happy new year.